Good evening, everyone.
So Deacon's on with my tablet. Here we go.
Hey Nate, and we're having a little trouble here.
Yeah, I didn't think it was for me to host the meeting. But then when I saw it was 7:02 and I was still waiting for the host to let me in, I said, well, I better go in and open it up if no one else did.
For a while because I had had several people ask me if I was hosting, but I was never informed that I was hosting or what login to use. And then I didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, fair enough. It's, you know, we'll call it. You know, just still kind of getting into the swing of things, right?
It's usually Grace will tell me if I'm hosting or not, and usually will give me login information. But the only time I ever was given login information was for this conservation commission meeting on Thursday, and that was it.
Hey Carrie, I'm really sorry about the confusion. We will follow up tomorrow and I'll explain everything. Yeah.
Hi Grace.
Hi Deacon. Hi, everybody. Thank you, Nate, so much.
No problem. I didn't know that.
I don't know.
No one else was doing it, so.
No worries. I was I was sick last week and fell behind on a couple of things, so. Carrie, you and I will follow up tomorrow. You are totally okay.
All right.
My bad. Do not worry about it. And as long as the meetings happen, we're all good.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion, guys. I think Grace thought I had I was in charge of the meeting, but then I couldn't log in, so I sounded the alarm for these guys to jump in. And of course, Carrie couldn't, so that's our story. Sorry for the confusion.
Well, we feel loved. We got everyone in town hall, so that's pretty cool.
I mean, well, at least this time I wasn't in the shower. So that's an improvement. We've improved. We're making progress, you guys. We're learning together.
I'm so glad that was recorded.
Me too.
Yeah, so I'm on my daughter's computer right now, which I'd like to get off and get onto my own, but I haven't succeeded.
All right. It seems like the meeting has started, so I'm gonna I'm gonna log off. You guys have a good meeting.
Just don't end meeting for all.
I'll try.
That's my job.
Curse me. All right, I'm just gonna click leave and it'll work and nothing bad will happen.
Yeah.
Hopefully. If I if my phone will respond.
She's gone.
Seems to be good.
Yeah, so. We're. Yeah, see if you can get out of this, Susan. Just 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 shut it down. I don't know. So so who's here so far? I mean Nathan and Jeff and Michael and me and.
Steve.
Robert.
Robert, yeah.
I'm here too.
They are.
Yeah, Windows there. Good. So so. I'm not technologically up to speed right now, and my screen isn't showing things correctly, but. I think we should get started. So are you all set, Carrie, to?
Uh, yeah, I don't think I am a host, but that's totally fine. I can co-host if needed, if wanted.
Yeah, great.
I'm gonna make you a co-host.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna make you the host.
Okay.
When are we gonna start doing this in person again?
I don't know. I'll I'll try to find out from I'll try to find out from Becky. It'd be a lot better.
Are we able? Town Hall's open.
Would you like?
Huh?
Please, please.
All right, so we're hoping to start in about a month. Our hangup is. We have a system downstairs where where committees can hold hybrid meetings and. That's the only way you can meet in town hall for this interim period, at least through July. You have to do it through the new fancy. Speaker and big screen TV. And that one of the problems is I can only schedule one meeting at a time for the hybrid meetings. So people are gonna have to stay a little bit flexible. Because any any meeting that takes place in town still has to be available to the public. And we are not at a place where everybody's comfortable coming into town hall. So for about the next three months, that's what we what we're gonna have to do. So we will be instructing at least one member near committee, probably Nate and Carrie. On the the system that's in the basement of town hall. And then your committee could sit around the big table with Al speaker, which will rotate and. And the public will be able to hear you and see you. And you'll be able to see the public.
Do we have to do that, Becky? If we choose to, can we choose to remain fully? Virtual?
Through July, we know for sure, but after July, we don't know how they're gonna change the rules.
But before then, we can stay fully virtual if we choose?
Yeah.
Great.
Becky, who's making the rules? Is this the state or a local local rule?
The July deadline is the the state deadline that is allowing Zoom meetings until July. As for trying to sort out in town hall, who can? You know, because when you can only have one meeting a night, that means somebody else will have to be on Zoom. So the select board will have to determine a policy with some, you know. Some criteria of who gets who gets the in the town hall meeting space.
So so the state's saying that even if you as a town elect to go back to in-person meetings, you have to have a Zoom opportunity for people to join that way.
I think some sometimes might assume that the full public can come. We are not, we use the guidance of the Board of Health. And if they still feel that we can't have more than, you know, 15 people in town hall. Then we will continue our practice of making sure it's hybrid. And especially with that. You know, so it's a bit tricky, but we're going by our Board of Health. As far as making sure the public. Can come into town hall, but we have found the public is much a little bit more. Appreciative of their exposure, being able to see meetings without leaving home. So there's a number of things trying to balance the public, trying to build, keep building attendance to meetings. And make sure people feel safe.
Thank you, Becky. Can I just ask one clarifying question? I think you you mentioned 15 currently with the Board of Health? And I assume that's including the members of the board itself and any other employees that would be in town hall at that time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is it is it, am I correct that you're saying that? There can be one hybrid meeting and one strictly virtual meeting on the same night?
Yes. You're right.
So Becky, if we come into town hall, do you think you can build us like a Hollywood Squares structure so we can physically be stacked like we are now?
If you're gonna help, Michael, I'm sure we can figure it out.
I'd feel so much more comfortable. I'm just used to like, you know. Seeing people in rows and columns.
We'll try to help out, Mike.
I've done the hybrid meetings in other towns and. It's it's not as good as if everyone was on the Zoom screen. Everyone's in, everyone's present or everyone's on Zoom. The hybrid is, to me, is a lesser quality meeting.
I just want to say it took us two months of practice and change in. Technology. We went through about four or five different combinations, thanks to Melissa borrowing stuff. I think at this point, we have had successful hybrid meetings where people can hear. I think it's problematic if people have feel they have to wear their mask. In the in-person part. It's much more helpful if if the people don't need to wear their masks, if they're all vaccinated. Which is possible. So I think you'll be surprised. Jeff, you've been to, you were at the library meeting? No, you weren't at the library. The MBLC was.
I've 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 attended a number of other planning board meetings in other towns where the board is, the board is sitting there at a table. And then most of us are zooming in and it's. Yeah, it would be better if everyone was zooming or everyone was there in person, so it's.
Well, like I said, you'll be surprised. I think we've got a good setup. We've been complimented by people using Zoom that and. Finding that it works and. You know, we use CARES money to get some top-notch equipment, and I believe we should be functioning pretty well. And hopefully, within the next three weeks or so, we'll have it all going. Okay, I don't want to take any more time, Deacon, sorry.
Oh, no, we appreciate. So. So. I'll call the meeting to order. And note that it's being recorded. I would add that I can't, I have no Hollywood Squares picture on my screen. I. I mean, the only person I'm seeing now is Becky, so I mean.
We're almost there.
Susan is improving my computer as we as we speak. But I'll call I'll call the meeting to order. And I can't, I'll ask for public comment. I can't see anybody now but Jeff, so but if.
Deacon, if you go up to the upper right of your screen where it says view.
Oh, wait a minute, my Susan has fixed me up. I now have a better, I now have my own computer and. And the Hollywood Squares, so. Good. So.
Jen Davis has a comment.
Okay, okay. Okay, so. Is there anyone here who wants to make public comments?
Jen Davis has got her hand up.
Okay, okay, well, well, Jim, please speak.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm I showed up today because I want to know. How to deal with an issue I'm having with the developer who's redoing the parsonage house. They have installed some incredible lights that actually shine right in my windows. And light my house up all night long like it's daytime. I spoke to the developer once and he pointed them down at the ground, but they still are incredibly bright. I spoke to him a second time. He ignored my text. I stopped by and they told me that. It wasn't safe to have the lights off, which was ridiculous. I suggested that he take a look up and down Leverett Road and he would see that. Those lights were really out of hand. I've spoken to several neighbors, the people directly across the street who have a little baby whose house is being lit like daylight. All the time. The Edwards, who are on the other side of my driveway, are also incredibly annoyed by it. And I don't know what to do about this. So I had reached out to. The planning board asking if there was a way to perhaps. I don't know, write a bylaw for light pollution or something, and I'm just looking for advice on how to best. Get these lights dealt with because they're out of character for the town and they're also incredibly obnoxious. For those, the neighbors who have to have them shining in their windows. I mean, they're like, they're brighter than a streetlight if you've ever driven by it at night.
And I've I've noticed your lights and. One seems to be shining out the back, lighting up the septic system in the backyard. And the other one shines to the east and it looks like it's directed right onto a. Construction trailer that might have tools and stuff in it. Maybe those people are worried that that trailer needs to be lit up so that it's not vandalized or stolen. I'm not sure. Do you think these are permanent lights or just lights that are in place now while the contractors are there?
They have no intention of taking them down. They're planning on selling the house with the lights. They told me they were motion detector lights and I said they absolutely are not. They're on all night long. And they said, no, they come on when only when it's dark. That's not a motion. A light reading.
Maybe the motion of the moon or something.
So perhaps, you know, the person who whoever buys the house would be willing to take them down, but that does not solve the issue to me. I mean, the house could be on the market for a year. It could be, it shines directly in my bedroom.
So. Do they shine during the day as well? Are they just on all the time or are they?
There it's no, it's light detected, so they come on when it gets dark.
Okay, yeah, so I looked at our bylaws. And it's the only place where I saw that we currently have lighting prohibitions. One's on marijuana facilities, which we talked about, and then the other is for signs. We're not allowed to have lit signs. It's.
Solar too.
Yeah, and solar too. So like those are all relatively new because we, you know, did solar marijuana and then we redid the signs all in the last few years. But it seems like from the conversations that. Our intent was that we didn't want to have. Undo lighting in town. You know, if we're not requiring it from an industrial facility or commercial facility, it seems like within residence, but we haven't addressed it. We don't, we don't explicitly have a lighting. Section of our bylaw.
There is a prohibited use. Three dot two dash four signs or floodlights which constitute a hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic because of the intensity.
Yeah.
Of the illumination.
No, I looked at that one. I mean, Jen's trying to like sit in her living room or sleep or something, so she's not in the car. So I think I saw that one too, Nathan. It didn't seem like it applied. So I had to, I mean, I had two thoughts. I mean, one was it doesn't. It seems like a light bylaw is not. Inconsistent with what we've been already talking about in terms of the values you've incorporated in these other things. You know, if we wanted to, I could try my hand at doing it. You know, the other thing, Jen, I would say is. There's citizen petitions, so you you could for town meeting. You know, draft some version of a bylaw around lighting, you know. And you only need 10 signatures to get it, you know, considered. So, you know, my sense is that we might do a more comprehensive one, but if the board. Didn't feel like we have time, or if we decided we didn't want to do it, that's another option. But I think. Right now, there there is room for some kind of. Lighting bylaw because we have a we have a gap in. I think between what we value and what we've written.
But Michael, this this, even if we did that, this light would be grandfathered in, wouldn't it?
I don't think so.
No.
Why wouldn't it? What? I mean, it's not a special permit. It's just a thing.
Okay.
I mean, they might object, but I don't I don't think they get grandfathered.
As long as it would apply to this, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, like with the. With special permit stuff, if they get a permit before we pass a bylaw, then they get to keep doing their stuff. But since there's no permitting here, I think it's just an activity that we could. Say you can't do anymore. Jeff, do you think that's accurate?
Yeah, you're not saying you can't do it. You're just saying you have to do it to a.
A regulated level.
Yeah. And it's sort of like signs. It's recognized in. Mass Day law that signs are not grandfathered, that you can regulate signs out. And make changes in them. So so Jen, I did put this question out on my planner's list or. Sort of described the situation and asked. Some of my colleagues what they have in their towns. So I got, I don't know, four or five responses. I'm gonna ship them to you. I can ship them to the planning board too, maybe you and the planning board. And so everyone can get a sense of what's out there. At least from the ones who responded to me.
Jeff, is there any kind of summary you can give us that, you know, they fall into one or two categories or more complicated, more complex?
Easy to regulate when you've got special permit uses and you've got a lot of control, such as solar, such as marijuana. Harder to regulate for residential. Where you don't have the special permit. Venue to use. You can control a lot that way, right up front before they even build the thing. In residential, it's often a reactionary type thing that that happens. You know, the house is built and. Put in lights that are too strong and then. You know, there has to be a demonstration that they're too strong and measurements and things like that. It's harder with residential.
It seems, Jeff, like it's. It's sort of similar to noise in the sense that, you know, it's very subjective, but it's the nuisance factor. You know, like, and I don't know, like if we wrote a bylaw, it seems like the enforcement would be with the building inspector. But you would write it about light. I don't think you can quantify light in the same way.
You can quantify light by lumen. In other words.
Oh, I guess that's true. And directionality. I mean, it's a little mushy, but yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would, Jeff, if you sent that out, that would be great. I guess it would maybe be helpful. Jen, tell me if this would be helpful. If, I mean, if the planning board was interested. In following up and us and our and us doing it. It would mean that you wouldn't have to do it. So it seems like if we wanted. Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but I'd be I'd be willing to. To work on it, but it seems like doing it, you not knowing where we're at, we should. Have some pulse of the of the committee right now, maybe, perhaps.
I have a question for Jen. Do you know? How much, what the schedule is for the developer and, you know, when they expect to put the house on the market? Probably spring, I assume.
I think the interior is really not done yet. So. I don't, I don't know. And the, I will say, like, when I initially contacted the developer, he was very friendly and apologetic. He's the one who told me they were motion detector lights and he said he would point them down at the ground and I noticed absolutely no difference and they're not motion detector lights. I do feel like. If he hadn't just flat out ignored my last text, I would say, I feel like if I said to him, I've gone to the planning board. We are writing, you know, a bylaw that prevents you from doing this. He'd be like, oh, geez, you know, sorry. And would remove them, but given that he ignored my last request, maybe not. I mean, he, the people who are working on it, I will say, like, I stopped and talked to them and they were just. Fearful of destruction of property. Which is. I'm sorry, that's just somewhat ridiculous. And they're on the main street next to the fire station, so. The idea that they're gonna get ransacked if they don't have these bright lights is preposterous.
Well, they told you they were from Springfield and you have to have lights down there in order to protect the property.
Yeah, it's a different ballgame down there.
Right, but as I said to him, we're not in Springfield, are we? Look up and down the street.
What it was getting at, Jen, is, you know. Not quite knowing, you know. If we end up kind of going down this road a little bit, you know, there might be some pushback. You know, people may have. Certain uses that they have with their lights that we would bump up against, right? So. I mean, I I totally sympathize with your situation. I don't know how easy or not easy it would be to actually put something through and. You know, what other kinds of considerations are gonna need to be looked at? So I'm wondering if from your perspective, saying, all right, let's see when, you know, we get some neighbors in the house, you know, maybe they're just willing to take them down.
Maybe they are, but that could be a year. You know, the house is. You know, the last time I could see in the window, it was down to its studs inside. And it's particularly bad in the winter. I, you know, I'll grant you that. There's no leaves on the trees and so maybe it will be better, but that's not a reasonable response to somebody being able to do this. I mean, it's shining in every neighbor's windows. And it's just, you know, it's not in the nature of our town. I don't think that's not why people live in Chutesbury. It's not Springfield.
I mean, using the the noise example. You know, some like in the. In the energy storage bylaw that we'll talk about later, you know, the idea was that. You know, noise can't carry beyond at an unreasonable level past the the property line. And it seems like in some regards, you know, if we were to do lumens or whatever, you know, that you can. Maybe you 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 light your property, but the the glare factor can extend unreasonably beyond. I mean, it's still an annoyance if you're watching, if you have a next door neighbor that's like totally lit up. But that's that's different than having your house lit up by extension. So, I mean, we can mess with it if we want to.
Could I make a comment? Miriam?
Please, please.
You might want to look at the. The dark sky. What's it called? International Dark Sky Association. They have a sample lighting ordinance.
Thank you, Miriam.
One of the, one of the responses from. My colleagues has that, that is the response and they have connecting. Connecting info to that, to the dark skies. So that's part of what I'll be sending out.
Cool. I have a question. I have a question too. I mean, if this were, if if we had a, if we had a light regulation that that. That through the general bylaws, rather than the zoning, it would be enforced by the police. Maybe that, maybe that would be better. I don't, is that practical, reasonable?
Very much so, I would say.
Becky wants to comment.
I just want to mention that I know of another property that has a similar light that disturbs its neighbor. That would be impacted by this, so it won't just be this person. And I don't know how many others there are. But I know there's at least one on Pelham Hill Road.
Becky, what do you think about Deacon's comment? About not having it be zoning, but being just in the town bylaws?
That's where the noise bylaw is, I believe, right?
The noise bylaw is. Horrible and enforcing it is a nightmare. If this is better written and potentially enforceable. That would make a big difference.
Robert here. I'm just looking at a website of Massachusetts towns without. Door lighting ordinances and there are about 50 towns that have. Apparently addressed this topic.
Can you share that with us, Robert?
I'll.
After the meeting, I mean, that'd be great.
I'll send the site around, yes.
Thank you.
Great.
So 50 out of 351 have, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's about 50 towns that have such ordinances.
Rather than, rather than zoning bylaw.
Oh, I think it's just ordinances, period. I don't know if it distinguishes between zoning or general.
Yeah.
I'll send it over.
Okay, quick, quick note. Carrie, do you have your hand up? Are you trying to say?
Really quick, Jen, would you mind just saying what your address is for the minute, like for the purpose of me documenting minutes?
Oh, sure. It's 24 Leverett.
Thank you.
So I sort of get a sense that there's some interest on the board. Is that a correct sort of, like, we're not. Like, we're not committing to anything, but there's interest and looking into it.
There's interest, yeah, yeah. I think that's fair.
Okay.
There's, there's some interest.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm I'm not head over heels about another, another bylaw for one or two particular cases, but.
Would would it make sense if I take a stab at stuff, we put it on the agenda for next meeting? I mean, we might not be able to pull it off anyway for town meeting, because. Town meeting would be, is gonna be May something or other, right, Becky? Yeah, so we we're gonna meet like April sixth or something is our next meeting. I think that's. Or beginning of April sometime. So the turnaround might be a little too tight.
So does that suggest that I should do a petition myself?
You're free to do a petition if. If you wish.
I don't want to be at like cross purposes with your board.
Well, it's all, it's all based on what you uh, decide you want to pursue.
Your process could be quicker than ours. I think it is factual to say, because we'll meet on April fourth next. Um, and there's no guarantees.
It can't be April fourth, because.
Yeah, the eleventh.
So um, what is, if I were to do my own petition, does that mean it then goes on the town meeting agenda? And if that's the case, what's the deadline on that happening? Like, can I wait till the eleventh and if it didn't work out here, I still have time to pull that off? Or?
Officially, the select board has to accept petitions forty-five days before the twenty-first.
Which is what date?
It's just, it's like the beginning, it's coming up around the fifth of April or something, fourth of April.
Okay, so it has, so the.
Forty-five days?
Forty-five. For petitions, the select board sometimes. Allow them, so they might, I'm just saying what the official rule is, but the select board might take your petition, Eric, you know, later than that. But it would be up to, they wouldn't have to. It would be up to them.
It's it's not gonna come to us for a public, if it's zoning, it's still gonna come to us for public hearing. The select board refers to us, we hold a public hearing and write a report.
Prior to town meeting?
Correct, yeah. If it's general bylaw, we don't, we don't have a role, I don't believe.
Then just for your warrant article. Right, Becky?
Uh, petition.
No, 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 if if it came to the select board, the select board would then add it. To the warrant, if it wasn't zoning.
Right. And you wouldn't have to have a hearing, which means few people would know about it. Fewer people, potentially. The time is tight.
In the, in the, if it were to be a general bylaw, that would be a majority voted at annual town meeting?
Correct.
I mean, a fifty percent vote.
Yep.
So it would be the same that I would write a petition, but I would submit it to the select board and instead of the planning board?
Either way, you go to the select board.
Start at the select board. And either case.
Yeah, so Jen, if it's a zoning, when it goes to the select board and then the select board just hands it off to the planning board for a hearing. And if it's a non-zoning bylaw, it goes to select board and then they just add it to the warrant. Um, both are heard at town meeting. Zoning bylaws is, I think Deacon just said. Require two-thirds vote of town meeting and a regular warrant or article would just be a majority of town meeting.
And what would punt something over into the zoning category as opposed to being a general bylaw?
Mr. Lacy?
If it's something that applied universally to the town as a whole across all zones, just. Universal applicability like the noise, like uh, some, you know, pet type requirements and and things like that. Uh, you know, those fit into the general category. Light and noise can go into the general category. I know there are other things that. Have to go by zoning, um, but I I, light is one that doesn't have to go by zoning. Or it can go by zoning, you do it either way.
Okay, so it sounds like my best course of action would be to do a petition. And write it in such a way that it was more general and did not end up in, as a zoning issue. Which I don't think it is. I mean, I think it applies. Across. Every zone, as you said.
And then I think as a warrant article, you know, boards or committees could. Recommend or not, you know, if if there was, if they had an opinion about it, so.
Okay, so it sounds like I showed up at the wrong meeting, although this has been incredibly instructional, so I appreciate it.
Thanks for raising the issue, though. I mean, it was helpful to look and see where light showed up in zoning, because. I know we had conversations in the context of those other ones where. We clearly had opinions, but I was not aware that we didn't have a a general one.
And 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 I would note too that uh, the the select board has asked that the planning board. Discuss amendments tomorrow night with the select board. So I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, that's good to know.
I don't know how relevant that is to this particular discussion, but 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 we aren't, we are gonna need to do that.
Okay, well, I'm planning to go anyway, so I can, I can speak to them if people want me to.
I will be, I won't be able to tomorrow night. I'm on a mass mapping webinar from six to eight.
Well, they don't know where Massachusetts is?
Well, I'm I'm trying to find out, you know, maybe I'll know by eight o'clock.
Yeah, well, uh, well, I'm planning to go and um, and we'll, we'll talk about whatever, we'll. We'll present whatever the, whatever the board wants us to tomorrow night.
Um, can I just ask that the um, various people who had information that they were gonna send around? Um, I'd love to still be on that mail list and see so that when I put together something. Um, I have, you know, any resources that have already been unearthed.
How do we identify your email? Do you want to send that to the planning board?
I, I wrote to the planning board last week, which is how I ended up here in the first place. Um, I can send it again. I can put it in a chat here. What is the best way?
We don't use chat, so you can't do that.
Oh, no, you don't. That was smart thinking.
I, you know, I would, Jen, just send it to the planning board again.
Okay.
Well, I'll get it.
I will do that. Okay, I'll lower my hand now.
So we'll move along.
I just, can I just say one more time, thank you very much for your time and your help with this and I appreciate. The encouragement and information.
Thank you, so. The next item on the agenda is education and guidance. The Jeff has fielded a couple of inquiries lately. And encouraged people to come tonight to to ask questions, so. This would be the time if if. People want to do that. I'm not hearing any big response. Let's, let's uh. Let's move on to the ZBA. Do you, you wanna, do you wanna open the ZBA, Chuck?
Do, is um, Herb here?
Yes, he was.
Yeah, he is.
Herb, you wanna just?
My name is up there.
Hi, Herb. Oh, you, okay. We have all, all attendees here, so. I have seven forty-three. I'll officially open the meeting now. At seven forty-three and uh, the first agenda item I I assume is the same as yours. Um, as the planning board, it's our continued discussion of an action plan uh, for recommendations for zoning by law changes. Um, relevant to expanding the board to five. I think we already passed that motion, if I recall. I I don't, I don't have the minutes. Uh, from the last meeting, so I don't know. And then there was another part of that uh, in terms of. The proposed language for the change at the lake as well.
If it helps clarify at all, um, I did send out the minutes and they were edited, but it was very last second. I didn't expect anyone to see them yet. But in the last meeting, um, from what I recall, when doing the minutes, you guys did uh, vote to pass the uh, five member board for ZBA.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak to that if it'd be helpful. So we did, we all agreed that we liked, you know, the version. Um, I was tasked with talking to Donna and having her review it and she was, she was fine with it. The only outstanding. Question that we had, you know, was the language about um, you know, establishing versus, you know, is hereby established. We went with um, Herb's language, uh, just. See if I can share it real quick. Hey, Carrie, can you make, let me share? There we go, cool, thank you. Can you guys see that? Mm-hmm, okay, so this is what we. Donna saw and she was fine with it and she suggested that um. We replace the the prior one with this version, um, so it would just be swapping out. So this is what she's, she was good with. So the the only thing we just have to decide now, since we essentially said it was fine, was. I didn't want to send it to the select board without checking in, but the next step is for us to send it to the select board. Um, presumably, we, they can, you know, get it and look at it tomorrow and consider it. It's really not very complex, so. I can do that.
On the votes, since the language has changed, perhaps we should just do that.
I thought we voted on this language.
Oh, I thought that she changed it slightly, I thought. My, did I misunderstand that, Michael?
Um. The, well, we had, we had a question. It was originally. When the original language, it established the zoning bylaw and we had a conversation about what language. It should be since I think Herb, someone had pointed out that it already exists, so if we're gonna change it, so this is, this is what Donna saw and was okay with, so.
This is exactly what she saw and this is exactly what we voted on.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, then we're done.
Yeah, so it's just a matter of, I mean, we can vote to send it to select board. I don't think we really need to. I just didn't want to presume. Um, but if people are good with it, I'll just send it along. I'll do it tonight and hopefully they can talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Okay, sounds like everyone's good with that? Okay, I will send it along. And then for the second one, um, which was our our favorite non-conforming structure discussion. We, after lots of discussion, we had a a version that we agreed to send to Donna. And I sent it to Donna and Donna told me that she couldn't provide a legal um. Interpretation or any legal advice because she owns a house on the lake and therefore has a conflict. So she recommended that we. Identify another municipal um, lawyer that we consult and uh, I had mentioned that to Deacon, Deacon. I think maybe mentioned it to Becky, so that's, I, once we identify someone, I can send it to that person and I can have the conversation that I would have had with Donna. Um, but at this point, Donna can't participate. The Deacon, it's, you've got the floor, because you may have had no more at this point.
Well, I I've apprised, um, I've apprised Becky of the situation. Donna has suggested Alan Seawald or Koppelman and Page. Um, I don't think um. I don't think there's any decision at this point. Um, um, I certainly wanted to include Chuck in this.
Yeah, I I, in fact, I thought, again, I don't have the minutes in front of me. I thought what was going to happen. Was whatever the, whoever the lawyer was, whether it was Donna McNichol or any other lawyer, would also talk to me about it, but. Yeah, so I I I, any lawyer that looks at it, Alan Seawald, I know very well. I've known him for. Probably forty years, uh, and and I certainly trust his judgment. Professor of zoning law at West New England College of Law and he's done zoning law ever since he's been an attorney, which is. At least three decades. I think he's the. Uh, city solicitor for the town of, for the city of Northampton right now, so, I mean, he he's. Very, very well uh, credentialed. He was town council for the town of Amherst. He was partners of Bob Ritchie, you know, I I, you know. He's an outstanding attorney and I would certainly trust him, but I would still like to have the opportunity to talk to him before. You know, as he deliberates.
Oh, but I, well.
I would, I would request that. Access as well.
Of course.
Well, we're here, but I got a question before we go into, so what we, where we just agreed. And the thing that I sent Donna, which I can pull up if you want a refresher, was not, not getting into into the hike thing. We did everything else. But we agreed on a version, you know, and where we left it, Chuck, was you wanted to parenthetically ask Donna about constitutionality, but it was sort of. An aside from the document, because if we get into that, then we won't approve anything, I think.
Well, I I might, you know, I think by the time Alan Seawald or any other. Zoning attorney looks at this, we're gonna, it's not, we're not gonna be ready for the next town meeting, so I think, you know.
I I think we could be, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it it's the turnaround time, but you know, like, I talked to Donna two weeks ago. Um, and it's not a. I I don't know, maybe they'll say they can't move forward with it, then we we won't go anywhere. So.
Well, I I, again, I wanted the, I think part of what, again, I don't have the minutes, it's not in front of me, but I. I I, what I wanted is a discussion. Uh, with that attorney who's gonna look at it, as to my concerns about. Um, being unconstitutional as applied and the dangers of that and the liability of the town. And the liability of people on the, on the, on the zoning board too.
Um, this is, this is what I sent Donna, so everyone can see it. Uh, I'll make it bigger. So. It has the language on top that we talked about in terms of the rebuild, complete demolition.
Yep.
Um, that's the blue. We included the green, which is the parties in interest. And then we had two notes to Donna.
Right.
One was about the detriment. To see if that made sense and then you had requested this note to Donna about constitutionality. But I think. What we agreed to, at least that was my understanding when I wrote this up, was that. That, that input and chiming in about constitutionally was separate than. This, the the rest of the document.
Well, the, what's in red, I have very serious concerns about that. I I I had no problem going to Donna, nor would I have a problem. That going to Alan Seawall.
Yeah.
But I think uh.
Well, the red, we're not suggesting, it's, it's an open question.
Oh, okay, so the red is not part of the proposed language, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it and the idea was to get a sense of them, you know, it's like it says, can the bylaw be more specific and identity possibly. Detriments and that's the suggested wording, but it's not, it's not inherent in, like the blue and the green are.
All right, all right. I I just, you know, my issues with the red and so I I just think it's misplaced. It shouldn't be. In zoning, it should be in a general, or if it's in zoning, it should be in a preamble. But.
Well, all right, so can I have a word, Deacon?
Please, please.
Whoever we refer this to, and I don't think we need, we need to rush necessarily. I mean, we have a functioning section in there right now. And most of what this does is uh, reword. What we have now with the intent of keeping the the same meaning, but making it more clear to. People who are not zoning nerds. And then there's some new stuff. Um, some new elaboration. That actually goes a little farther and 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 describes what we're talking about. When we're talking about a neighborhood and a few other things and the kinds of detriments that we're looking at. And we have to be, bear in mind that it's not just the lake, it supplies townwide. So any attorney who's looking at this has to understand. What they're looking for and it has to be paired with the existing section. So that they can understand that much of this just tries to restate the existing section with the same meaning. Different words, better words, but the same. Different words, better words, but the same meaning. And then here's the new stuff and, and be very clear what's what.
I agree.
So.
May I say something, Deacon?
Please, please.
To me, I think before we get to legal interpretations, is there some way that we can compromise as a group? Because compromise would mean agreeing to things that are hopefully legal and fall within a definition without there being a further legal discussion of everything. So can we compromise on the issue of what is meant by more non-conforming? Because I think that's the key.
Herb, I, I would like to think we could, but based on the conversations that we've all heard Jeff and Chuck get involved with. I think they're so, they're so you know, diametrically opposed that I actually do think a land use lawyer here, like, who, who is it? Chuck?
Al, Alan Seawall.
Alan Seawall with both, with Chuck in one of his ears and Jeff on the other ears would be the quickest way to solve this.
I agree.
Right. I just was saying that there could be a way to solve it in the group without using a lawyer, but I guess you're right.
Well, I mean.
I would offer, I've, I've offered my suggestions before and they've not been helpful. So I guess we're stuck at this point. Repeating what we said before is probably going to do no good. Steve, so I, I agree, we probably should go forward. And I just was trying to put a hand out to is there a compromise between the two extremes, or not extremes, the two viewpoints of leaving things as they are? Because basically the way it's written now, by right, you can build on a non-conforming plot. But only within the constraints of what you have, period. You can't add to it. You can't subtract from it. You could subtract from it, but you can't add to it in any dimension, because then you make it more non-conforming. That's all I'm saying. Is, is there some way we can reach a compromise about that issue of what is meant by non-conforming?
Well, Herb, Herb, that, that's not always the case. You can have a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. And say it's non-conforming, it's a small lot, so the whole thing is non-conforming, but the non-conformity that you're really talking about is say the right side setback, too close on the right side. If what you're doing is you're going and building on the left side and, and building within the setback over there, you can do that. You, you know, that's the compliance side. So you can go out a little bit over there, as long as you're not going over the setback. So there are cases where, where, where you can do that. You, you're just not exacerbating the non-conformity. You're building within the allowed setback.
If you took the red out, I, I would have no problem for now. I mean, you can, you can revisit this next year. But if you took the red out now, I, I have no problem with it being advanced to the selectmen, to the select people and to town meeting.
And just take this part out.
For now, I mean, doesn't mean you can't revisit it, or we can't revisit it, or or, or if, if you want Alan to look at the, the rest of it. You know, I don't even have to have a conversation with him, really.
Well, and I think, and I think to that point, Chuck, you just reminded me, I mean, the reason it says a note is that we agreed. I think you must have said that last time, so we took it out. So the, so the only two things that are really being suggested for changes are, you know, the negotiated language about demolition, which we talked to it at length and shows up as blue. And then the green that we agreed to. So, I mean, if we just did that, I think that, you know, we were, we were looking to find out what Donna thought about the red, but we weren't suggesting that it be included.
Yeah.
This, what we see here is what we agreed to last time.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, so I, I, I have no problem with this going forward as it is. If that red is not included. If the language, if the intent of this is to clarify for non-zonies and those who are looking at this all the time, then I, I think this is clearer than the, than what we had. I, I don't think it solves the problem a hundred percent, but it's clearer and you can just leave for another day. Or maybe another year or another fiscal year. That red language. And then we wouldn't have to necessarily have Alan Seawall look at this now. And I mean, if you want him to look at it, that's fine too.
I think our process is always that we have, you know, normally we have town council look at anything before we send it to the select board and then bring it to town meeting. And so the complication is just that Donna can't chime in.
Yeah, so give it to, give this to Alan as it is, without the red and see what he says, you know, and.
But one thing I would, one thing I would say is that, is that Donna has recommended that, that, that we use Alan Seawald or Koppelman and Page. But I, but I don't think that, that we're actually authorized by the, by the town to seek counsel beyond, beyond the, the regular town council. But I, but my guess is that, that we could get that. But we could get that sort of authorization tomorrow night when, when we explain to the select board what we are doing with amendments.
I would think that you would.
And I don't, I would imagine that they would just do that.
I, yeah, I mean, he just, all he has to do is look at the old bylaw and look at this bylaw. I, I imagine he can do that, you know, pretty quickly and, and if I wouldn't want more than a fifteen minute discussion with him and maybe Jeff can have the same amount of time with him. And, and so he spends an hour.
Yeah, so, so why don't, why don't, why don't we get authorization tomorrow night? And then, and then I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you Chuck or, or Jeff contact Alan Seawald.
Yeah, if you want me, I, I'm happy to do that.
So wait, does that mean Deacon and Michael that you want his opinion on what was in red or what's here now?
I think what's here now, because what's in red is hours and hours and hours of discussion.
Okay, okay.
You know, that, that has, what's in red, you know, has, there are literally dozens and dozens and dozens of cases.
Okay, that, that's all I was asking.
I think that would take him more than an hour. I think it would take several hours.
Okay.
And what about the yellow? The, the yellow note to Donna.
Well, you could give it, you could give the, yeah, you could give that to Jeff and to, um, to, to Alan. You know, I'm, that's what I'm going to talk to him about, the danger of the, of the other bylaw, the one we, the one, our present bylaw that we have in force right now. The danger of an unconstitutional application. And I feel the same way about this too, but I think, although I do think this is better.
Well, it seems like, I, I, I guess I have two thoughts. One is if he comments on the yellow, he can either say good point, but this, the way it's written can proceed. You know, because it's an improvement over the last, last version, or he can say, oh no, this brings up a huge constitutional thing, in which case the current thing is unconstitutional and this one's unconstitutional. Then we just have a big hole because you have nothing.
Not necessarily, because I, I think the, the previous one and this one are constitutional on its face.
Okay.
Very different, something being constitutional on its face. In other words, as written, don't forget the, the previous one was approved by the Attorney General's Office as being constitutional on its face. I think it's also constitutional on its face. I think this is constitutional on its face. I think Alan Seawall would likely say the same thing. What I want to discuss with him is something slightly different, because it's, it could be constitutional on its face, or it could be unconstitutional as applied. And that's the danger, unconstitutional as applied. That, that I, I would, and that's what I would say to him. That's what I would have said to Donna. And, and perhaps for him, because Donna can't do it, to suggest language that maybe eliminate that.
May I speak?
Please.
So I think what you're asking of a lawyer is something that I think the lawyer won't do. Which is to arbitrate a compromise. I think arbitrating a compromise is between the parties involved. And I don't think a third party is going to arbitrate a compromise between two points of view. I think we're going to spend a lot of money. But have somebody come up with an opinion that will not answer the issue of compromise. To me, it's a simple compromise, two definitions of what's considered non-conforming. And I don't think, my opinion, that a lawyer is going to be able how well trained he is, or well documented he is, to change that. Obviously, this has gone to many, many courts. I think that if we take care of this within our group, we can do something that's going to be constitutional and regular and appealing and in keeping with state law.
Well, you know, I, I certainly have an opinion how we could do that, but I'm not sure Jeff would agree with it. So, you know.
That's where, that's where compromise comes in.
I mean, I'll just state it quickly, and, and it's my position that if there's no further encroachment on any side at all, right side or left side. In other words, the sidelines, and if there's no encroachment on the front, and if there's no encroachment on the back, none of those encroachments, which, which theoretically could make it more non-conforming, and none of those exist. In terms of the height, the, the, the so-called line is the twenty-eight feet line. So my, my view is the language, I don't mind the language because it could flag it, but you know, I, I think that if there's no encroachment on either side, back, front, any side, it should be a matter of, it should be given the, as a matter of right. It shouldn't even go to the zoning board at all. That's what I suggest the SJC says in the most recent decision. And, and I think having this in there, and then denying it, where no one's going out on the side, no one's going out in the back, no one's going out in the front, they're just going up five feet. And denying it is going to lead to unnecessary and protracted litigation. And in my opinion, at least in the present state of the law, with, with a high, very high probability that the town would lose that lawsuit. Now Jeff, I know disagrees, but that would be my.
Okay, I'm, I'm about to unless the, the chairman.
No, no, I was going to call on you. You had your hand up.
No, I, I'm familiar with the two cases, the three cases actually that are in play here. There was a case, I think it was from the eighties, the Goldhurst case, in case anyone wants to read it, that specifically said that taking a non-conformity, whether it's sideline or front line or something, and extending it upwards can be interpreted as a, as substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and extending the non-conformity. That case is still in the books. The case that Chuck is, is citing, Bellalta, I've read it for the third time today, does not reverse that. Does not reverse that. Oh, it doesn't, but it certainly comments on the whole theory.
Oh, okay, here we go again, guys.
That's what I mean. There's not, it's not.
I really think we have to move on and I, I think.
I'm, like I said, just send it up as it is. And that's it. This, you know, it's just, save it for another day. We're not going to solve it. Save it.
Can I speak?
Please.
You know, it, it, it occurs to me that you know, our bylaw says that you can't go up past the existing roof line. And, I mean, maybe I'm going to ask my own question here, but if is it the, the highest point in the existing roof line? Is that what, that's what the bylaw says, I believe.
Well, it says it, it, you just have to have a special permit for it. That's what it says.
Yeah. You can't go up by right. So if, you know, let's say that the, the house is, you know, two stories on, on one side and one story on the other side, right? And the one-story side is, is the side that is non-conforming on the side lot, on the sideline, side lot line. Now, would that mean that in theory you could still put a second story on that house as long as you don't raise it up past the highest level of the existing roof line? Which would possibly, you know, be an increase in the non-conforming nature of that structure by right, under our bylaw. But if you just had a, a single-story house and you wanted to you know, go up, that would be you know, you wanted to just, you know, maybe have eight, you know, ten-foot ceilings instead of eight-foot ceilings and you wanted to go up to two feet, but it puts your roof up a little bit higher, that would you know, constitute, I need a special permit.
Hey, hey Nathan?
Yeah.
What, what, what you should do is you should get our bylaw out and you should go through these examples here.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're little drawings that, and, and they illustrate these various scenarios. So alteration that increases the overall height but does not encroach upon any setback. It tells you that's by right or that's by special permit. So you become familiar with those. They're, they're like
No, I mean, I've looked at those, Jeff. I'm, I'm, I don't know if it's one of those scenarios. It's more just that, the fact that if we're you know, you could potentially you know, do this reconstruction, you know. It says you can do reconstruction by right if you don't increase the non-conforming nature. And we define increasing the, the non-conforming nature is, you know, you know, lessening the distance between a lot, a lot line than you're non-conforming with, or increasing the height of the house past the existing highest point of the roof line, right? I mean, are people understanding like what I'm driving at here, or is it not really landing?
I'm not getting it, but.
I'm, I'm not getting it either. You're trying to think of, of, of some scenario where there's a part of the house that I, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, you know, yeah, it, it, this is something that would be helpful with, with a diagram. I don't think it's, it would be covered in those diagrams from the bylaw, but it's, I mean, the idea is that you know, if increasing the height is, you know, an increase in non-conformity, depending on the layout of the existing structure and, and where the highest point of the roof line is, you could potentially know, in, increase the non-conforming nature, or at least depending on how it's, is defined, right? So if based on the case you just mentioned, Jeff, if, you know, increasing the height could be you know, could be considered or interpreted to be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, right? I mean, you take, you know, to, to take your, your house for example, Jeff, right? You've got your, you know, the main part of your house, and then you've got that garage, right? That's like a lower level. Right? Now, you know, your house is, maybe, I'm just theoretically, it's, it's violating the setback from Baker Road, right? But you want to, you know, increase the amount of storage capacity in your garage. So you want to go up a few feet, right? But you could do that by right under our bylaw. Because it doesn't bring the height higher than the highest line of the roof of your existing structure. But it does, you know, bring up that you know, that non-conforming area of the house that's, you know, encroaching on the setback on Baker Road.
Okay.
So based on, you know, do you understand what I'm saying? So like that could be.
I would need a special permit for that, because that, that is example number nine.
Okay, so can I interject? So, did you finish, Jeff? I don't want to interrupt you. I just, I wanted to throw in a different idea.
Without going into it, what Nathan just described, my house encroaches on the front setback. And if I tried to increase the height of any portion of the house, I, I would require a special permit, because that's deemed to be furthering the non-conformities, taking the, the parts that's, the non-conform. furthering the nonconformities, taking the parts that are nonconforming and going up with it. So I would need a special permit, and the ZBA would have to determine that that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the clarification. I was yeah.
So I wanted to throw in
I don't know that inside it out as much as I should, I guess.
So I want to, I feel like Herb is attempting to, always attempting to be the voice of reason in this thing. And so I'm inspired by his, what struck me listening to you, Nathan, was, you know, this idea, can we come up with compromise language or whatever? And it seemed so conceptually, what we're saying, there's two parts of this. One is that in no case are we prohibiting it. We're saying you can't do it by right. You have to ask for a special permit. And so I'm wondering if the language that we can include here is to make it explicit that special permits will not be unreasonably denied. Because
I was thinking, just say it's by right. But then also explain that if it goes beyond that height, there will be need for a special permit. Just make it clear.
Right. But that changes the dynamic. I mean, to keep the dynamic the same, you could say, because currently it's not by right. So if we, if we say it continues not to be by right, you need to have a special permit if you want to increase it, but rather than having it be an implicit concept, make it explicit that special permits will not be unreasonably denied. So the burden is then on the ZBA to, to be, you know, explain why if they say no, it's not unreasonable. You know, so, but it makes it really apparent. It sort of, it changes your discussion to say, is it okay? Is it not? To saying, are we being reasonable or not unreasonable? And it make, I'm just throwing it out as, because I'm approaching it less about the detail and more about the concepts. Because I think that's, I'm realizing, there's nowhere in here that it says it's prohibited. It's just saying it needs a special permit. And then you make a determination in the realm of special permit, so that's, that's really the thing. The other constitutionality would be if we said you couldn't do it at all.
Yeah, you know, Michael, my impression of our nonconforming section here and these 10 examples and the way it's written, it's more generous than it has to be under state law. It could be a lot stricter, a whole lot stricter. All of this could be special permits. But we've elected back in 2008 to make quite a bit of it by right. But all of these things could be by special permit, but they're not. So I think it's already fairly generous.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to change it. I was just, I don't know, do you guys, when the three of you talk, do you assume that when you're considering a special permit, that you're, it has to be reasonable, and that's just assumed?
And I think it is. And the law assumes that if it's not reasonable, that's what the court, the court will overturn it. If the court finds it was unreasonable, unreasonably denied, they'll call it arbitrary and capricious. So I mean, that's inferred in the law.
Yeah, so I was just thinking of making explicit, but I don't know if that changes the dynamic or not.
I think it's much longer discussion. I really
Okay. It's a much longer discussion, but you know, to say that a new house can be 28 feet and a reconstruction cannot be 28 feet, that doesn't make sense to me, but there we are.
Yeah, I mean, and the last, I mean, again, the last example, an alteration that increases the overall height but does not encroach upon any setback. It says this example produces to add a second floor to the portion of a structure that does not encroach on any setbacks. This alteration is permitted by right. That's what it says.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
So we should proceed with the thing that's on the screen, and then I would propose that for next year, or whenever, that the planning board not consider a bylaw until the ZBA has a recommendation for it.
Yeah, again, I won't be on the ZBA, so
Yeah, but it's, it doesn't, we're getting drawn into your discussion.
That's fine with me, believe me, you know.
So if you guys can figure out the recommendation, then we can consider it.
All I'm saying is if you keep it like this, this is my opinion, ultimately, the court's going to decide this. You know, maybe five years from now, or 10 years from now. I hope it's 20 years from now and I won't be around.
But, but if the court looks at our bylaw, they will note, as I just did, that it is more generous than it has to be, given the state law, because every one of these 10 scenarios could be special permit. We didn't do it that way. And really, it is as applied. It's how this stuff is, is applied, case by case, depending on the testimony deterred at the public hearing, the circumstances on the ground, maybe some precedent that's set by the board, conduct of board members, how the decision is written, whether it's justified fully, whether findings are made. You know, that's often where the court step in and say, no, you botched this, because you messed that up, or or the last one you did was completely different, and for no reason whatsoever, you did this one a whole different way with no justification. They'll come in and shoot you down then. But that's not the kind of ZBA we run, or that's not the kind of planning board we run in this town.
So the last thing I was going to say way back when is if Chuck, you and Jeff are going to talk to Alan, it seems like there's no reason I should be part of it.
What do you mean, there's no reason you should be part of it?
Well, what I, you know, depending on what it is, either Jeff or I tend to talk to Donna, and we sort of get Donna's take, and then we report back, but if the two of you are going to talk to Alan, it seems superfluous for me to sort of, you know, Jeff can just bring this to Alan, or the two of you can bring it to Alan, and then Jeff can report back to the planning board, but both of you can't.
Yep, whatever. Yeah, I mean, I think, I just want to express my concerns to him, especially about the last case we dealt with, and why I strongly felt that that would have been unconstitutional as applied. That's all.
So I'll share, I'll send this to the two of you, and then if you guys, once the select board gives us clearance, one of you can set up a time to talk. It seems like you should both talk at the same meeting.
But I don't think that if the select board gives you clearance, and it's going to go to town meeting, just like that, right? And then it'll pass
No, 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 the clearance is, the clearance is to talk to a lawyer.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, because we're not authorized to talk to other lawyers.
No, I know, I understand that. I get that. I mean, I understand, completely understand that. It's just, I just wanted it to be a brief conversation, because I, you know, I mean, Alan and I can get talked for three hours. I don't want to do that. You know, that's, that's a lot of money for the town. I don't, so. I mean, he's going to probably just come to the conclusion, there's always a danger that it could be unconstitutional as applied. It's constitutional on its face. That's what I expect they'll say. But if you can suggest language that make it more unlikely, that would be great, too. Might just a sentence or two with rhythm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we can, we can finish this discussion pretty soon. So so my thought is that Michael and I go to the select board tomorrow night, we ask for authorization to, to, to talk to Alan Seawald, they give it to us, and and either you or Jeff will contact Alan Seawald and set the thing up. I mean, is that, is that the right procedure?
Yeah, it's just that he might say, yeah, let's talk in two weeks. So, you know, he might say that, I mean, you know, he's a very, very busy man, I can tell you. He's a city solicitor for Northampton, so.
Well, we can always use compliment and page if that's, if there's more
Alan Seawald, I think he's, he's more on top of this stuff and litigates.
I have a question. Yeah, so this will be an individual discussion between Chuck and Jeff and the lawyer, or a combined discussion with the lawyer?
I think combined would be better.
That's fine.
I agree, I agree.
If it is combined, I would like to be part of it.
Okay, good.
It's a ZBA discussion.
Let's, let's, yeah, that'd be great.
You might just have to post it.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'd have to post it. That's okay. You know, but it wouldn't be an hour. It'd probably be, you know, it might be two hours. So get, try to get authorization for two, for two hours, you know, I mean, maybe an hour meeting and, you know. Yeah, just, why don't you just get authorization for two hours, just in case.
So if this is going to, if this is going to be a ZBA meeting,
Yeah.
then we have to, we have to do it via Zoom and it's a public meeting and
Yeah, that might not be a good idea, because we can sell tickets.
Yeah, well, you guys, actually, Jeff and, I mean
Actually, we should sell tickets to this meeting.
Yeah, no, I think it's probably a mistake now that I think about it, you know.
You have a quorum.
I'm just asking to be part of the meeting. I don't care about a ZBA meeting. I mean, just because it's the three of us, why does that make it automatically a ZBA meeting?
Because it's a three of you, you're a quorum. In fact, Jeff
Two of you will do it.
As ZBA.
Yeah, Jeff and Chuck are, yeah.
Why don't, maybe, maybe Why don't we do it like, why don't we do it like this? Alan will, will have a brief session with Chuck, and Alan will have a brief session with me as a planning board person, not as ZBA person. Because otherwise it'd be insidious, and that would be, you know, the only thing. So he has a conversation with each of us, representing different boards. Is that okay? Would that be okay with the planning board?
Is that legal? I mean, could, I don't know.
I don't know if you can take that hat off. I think that it's still a majority of the zoning board meeting in quorum without, without the public, I think that could be problematic. That's a question Donna could answer, I think.
I think, I think you're a ZBA person in PP clothing at that point.
Yeah, I, I, I would suspect that Donna would say that's a quorum, but, you know.
Individual meetings would be a quorum.
Well, no, individual meetings, if I met with her, or if I met with Alan Seawald alone, or Donna alone, and Jeff met with them alone, either one of them alone, that's not a problem. But if we, if we put Jeff and I together,
Well, how about if I meet with them alone?
That's fine. That's, that would be
Yeah, then I let Herb do it.
Let, let her, let her be, I mean, I think that'd be great, in fact, just, because I think Herb understands this whole situation. And that would be, maybe even be better, you know, and then if he wants to talk to Jeff or I,
He can't.
You know, individually, individually, not, not
What did I just do?
Yeah, I think Herb, that's the idea.
I think you could probably talk to him for half an hour and then, you know, listen to you, and then, you know, and then Jeff can clarify any points he wants to make, and I can clarify any points I want to make. And then, you know, maybe that's just an hour, which
Well, does it make sense, does it make sense to just have this as a ZBA meeting and do it, and do it that way? And then you don't have
That's the best thing.
The only, I would say it does not, believe me, I believe in transparency here, but you know, insofar as I'm the chair of the ZBA, I don't want to create a situation where Jeff and I are arguing about this and the public is hearing, not that they don't
We have hours of recorded documentation of you doing it already. It's
Right, 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 so
Michael, Michael, I'm not sure Deacon is entirely clear on what the difference is between Chuck and Jeff's point of view.
Thank you.
Deacon, are you, can you say anything quickly?
Deacon, it's only about this much.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a difference of seven, 27 feet and 28 feet.
It's a little bit like that.
Yeah, but it's got to be legal. I mean, I don't see the, I don't see why the transparency is a problem. I mean, why Yeah.
Well, it's not the transparency, it's the issue of how the meeting gets drawn out forever and ever, because the folks are going to be part of the public meeting, will bring in issues that are not related to the issues, not related to the points of view. I mean, we're looking, we're looking for a consultation from someone about points of view for the group. Why can't we do that?
Well, you can do it in the agenda. You could just set it up that way and have a public comment. I think what I would say, to sort of get back to Deacon's point about we need to move on, because we actually have other planning board stuff to do, is if Deacon and I go to the select board, and assuming we get permission to talk to Alan Seawald, which I assume we will, I, either Deacon and I can email the ZBA and say, you now have the ability to talk to Alan, and the ZBA can figure out if it's going to be a ZBA meeting where you're inviting Alan, or you're having Herb meet with Alan, but it's a ZBA process thing, because we don't have to be part of it. We just have to know what comes out of it.
That's good, Michael. Kick it into their court. All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we just table the whole thing until July 2nd?
I just want to know what to do. I mean, I
Well, I think it's a good idea. And the only thing I would say Well, the only thing I would say is to get maybe an hour or two limits, so that we all understand that there's a limit, that we're not going to go on for 10 hours, you know.
I think Michael's suggestion is a good one. I'm serious about
Absolutely.
You know, yeah.
But, yeah, I don't want to do this more than two hours.
It's, it's, you guys get to figure out
Chuck, we've already done this more than two hours in the last five meetings.
I know, but, but, well, he'll be charging us, and I'm not sure he'll charge us the same way as, as Donna McNichol charges.
No, and that might be an argument for keeping it to a one-hour meeting, right?
Sure, I mean, might not be able to, it might take an hour to understand what the problem
Because it'll be a ZBA thing, whether it's one person or three people, if you go over too long and someone gets pissed off, the select board will let the ZBA know. So if you want to avoid that, you keep it short.
Yeah, he might want to read the three, he might want to read the three cases that we're talking about. He might want to do that, and that's an hour there, you know.
I hope he knows them.
Well, he knows them, but you have to keep, no matter how well you know them, you still have I read the, you know, these cases ten times.
Hey Chuck, Chuck, you want to adjourn the ZBA meeting?
Yeah, I think we have marching orders, right?
Yeah.
I'll, I'm going to table everything else. We don't have minutes. What else, hold on here. No, no, let's just table everything else, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have that?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so Jeff moves to adjourn. Herb, will you second that? Okay, any further discussion? Hope not. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I guess, Jeff, what do you say, and Herb, what do you say, because this is on Zoom, so.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Meeting is closed at 8:31.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Let us know what's going on.
Okay, so so Penny Jakes has asked that the planning board provide a letter of, a letter of support that the open space people can send to the state and get, you know, get their plan, get their plan registered with the state, so. I emailed the, I emailed the a draft letter that Penny provided, that I sent it out earlier today. I wonder, Michael, if you could put that on screen.
I can. Hold on one sec. Yep, hold on, here we go, share. Can you see it, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good with it, Deacon.
Me too.
I'm, I'm fine with it, too. So
I move we accept the letter and have the chair sign it on behalf of the board and get it on out of here.
Second.
Okay, it is going to have to be it is going to have to be edited slightly before I sign it. I mean, just I mean, it doesn't have letterhead or date as is.
So we're assuming that, that before you will sign it, you will, we will, you will do that as appropriate.
And you'll check for any typos and punctuation errors.
Yep, but Harvard comm is in where necessary.
Yeah.
At your best discretion.
All right, I will do that, and I will sign it and send it off.
Well, you want us to vote, follow through on the vote, or no?
Yes. Don't we have to discuss it first, like, you know?
Well, I disagree. I disagree.
Well, okay, I'll, who wants to say something more? No one. Okay, I'll call the roll. Uh, Michael.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Did I miss? Oh, Nathan.
Forget me, yeah, I'm an I.
Okay, and I'm an I. Did I leave anybody out? Done. Okay. So, uh, let's move on to, um. Um, energy storage. I know Michael wanted to talk about this.
Yeah, this one I want to talk about. Um. So hopefully. Well, so I sent something out. Uh, last week after Jeff and I went back and forth and crafted something. And then I sent something out on Saturday, which is an updated version. Um, and this is, yeah.
Can I share my version? Cause it's the same as yours, except I have some comments and stuff in it that.
Yeah, go for it.
Here to see. It, um, let's see, share a screen. Am, am I able?
I don't know, are you?
Am I able to share? Let's try. Oh, I bet you I can. Storage. Should be it. Okay, there it is. Folks, folks see it?
Yep.
All right, so, so Michael, why don't you, um, let's see, you, you can't scroll on this one, can you?
No, but that's okay. You can, you can, I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk us through it and then. So, the, the first two parts here, one was, um, we would want to change the use table. And I guess, you know, one of the, the highlights from the last time we talked. Was, if you recall, there's energy storage as a primary use, which is a standalone, which is what we talked about. And then there's an accessory use, which would be like the one of WeLock with this battery connected to our energy generation, whether it's solar or wind or something. Um, and that was an open question. And I came away after looking at stuff and thinking about it. And then Jeff confirmed that we, number one, we don't have to allow energy storage as a primary use. Cause it's not, not like solar, there's no state exemption. So we came away thinking that we wanted to prohibit that. Um, and so we was.
Is that what B does in, in this?
Um, yes.
Scroll up, Jeff, if you would. Because I read, I read your, your March ten, uh, twelfth, uh, revision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically it makes it explicit that it's as a primary use. And so that would just get reflected, I think, in, with Jeff's edits, um, in the use table as well. Um, and the way we ended up doing it, to Jeff's recommendation, which I think was good, is that. We have a section three point three, which is about accessory uses. And so across the board, we prohibit energy storage as a primary use. And then the language that we'll discuss in, in this moment or two, all comes in as a new part of an accessory use. We're basically saying, here's a new accessory use. This isn't how, how it's allowed, uh, if that makes sense. Did I get that correctly, Jeff?
Yep, it, the note standalone, it has to be accessory. And, um, that's the only way you can do it as an accessory use, so.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
Uh, could, could you just discern, uh, what is the significance of turning it? From a primary use to an accessory use?
Well, so primary use is it's just a standalone energy storage installation. Um, so there, there's no energy gen- energy generation at all. Um, and for the secondary use, because of state law with, with the smart program. Any new so industrial solar has to have batteries. So we can't prohibit an accessory use for solar. Um, and by extension, it seemed like we should allow accessory use for winds as, as well. Um, and if there's ever some other energy generation that comes around the pike, that could be accessory use. But it would have to be in addition to something else. It couldn't, we don't want to just have it all by itself.
Got it, thanks.
So Jeff, you want to scroll down a little?
Sure. Just, just tell me when to stop.
Um, I think it's the A, B, the A, B and C thing that Steve was just talking about. Yeah, that's cool. So there were sort of three scenarios and this sort of gets to it. So for non-commercial or a non-utilities scale energy storage, um, basically. It's allowed by right for residential and non-commercial, um, as long as it's using energy. Um, onsite and it's, and it's not being considered for those purposes. Um, it still would require a building permit. A, a electrical wiring permit, um, and also that it's within twenty-five p- feet of the primary structure. So it's not like, you know, a hundred feet into the woods or something like that. Um, so that's sort of A, basically just sort of puts out. The non-commercial, non-industrial, as we just talked about and Steve pointed out. Primary use is explicitly prohibited. And then C, which is where the rest of the bylaw comes from. Uh, is about commercial and utility. So it would require a special permit. Um, and the thing that we came up with, which is helpful, is that. You know, Jeff was pushing to sort of have this be more integrated, a little bit shorter. And so the idea was. If it's a secondary use, an accessory use for solar, it has to comply with all the things that are in the solar bylaw. If it's an accessory use for wind, it has to comply with everything for wind, um, so that they're directly tied. And then the rest of what we'll go through are things that don't fall into necessarily those two categories. So things that are just about energy storage regardless of the generation. Does that make sense conceptually?
Yes, but I, my question is, all of the other, uh, safety and environmental standards, is that, where does that go?
So all this, down below is, is all the stuff that's just directly for energy storage regardless of energies, energy generation.
Okay.
Yeah. So like, for example, you know, in solar, there was like the trail mitigation thing. Um, so. It, it couldn't mess with trail mitigation, just like solar couldn't, because it's part of the same special permit. Um, in all likelihood, there, there's two scenarios, either they would, well, with solar. If there's a solar application coming forward. The solar generation and the accessory use for energy storage will be one so special permit. Because it's required in order to get the smart subsidy. For wind, someone hypothetically can say, I want to do a wind turbine somewhere. And then two years later come back for a special permit for, say, a battery. Um, so there's two different kinds of scenarios that can happen. Um, but both would require a special permit and both would have to tie in. But Jeff, you want to scroll down to the? Cause I, as. The, so here with the required documents, I think some of the stuff I would call out, but with the blue. I ended up having a really good conversation, um, folks in Norton, Mass, which is in the southeast. Have been dealing with batteries for a while and they've developed some pretty good expertise, which is some of the information I sent you. So, the, the biggest, sort of stepping back, the biggest issue around safety with batteries in particular. All the, all of those other energy storage is that there's a concept of thermal runaway. And so if something fails in a battery, and it, it doesn't have to be mismanagement, it could just be construction, like something, you know. One of the battery cells fails. Because they're generating heat, they heat up. And then. The issue is that thermal, the thermal runaway concept is it keeps getting hot. And then it goes to the next cell or the next battery and it keeps getting hotter and hotter. And there's no way to reverse that. There's no switch you can turn off. And what I learned is that. You, you can't, if there was a fire, you can't stop the fire with water. You basically can't stop the fire. All that the water does is tries to cool, cool down the heat. So it doesn't keep heating up. And keep extending to other, other batteries. So the issue here in terms of the liability. Which is more explicit than we had in solar is that it has to be adequate for the risks involved in the hazard mitigation analysis. Which is one of the requirements. So it's, there's this thing where people come in and we would require it through this. This is the first item in. A one, a site-specific hazard mitigation analysis to be conducted by a third party at the applicant's expense. So they would come in and they would say, based on the design, the placement, all that kind of stuff. Here, here's what the hazard could be and this is what we recommend mitigation for. And that would sort of create the benchmark for. An objective assessment of how, where the risk is and what might happen. And so tying liability to that. And then tie, tie some of the other stuff to that. But, um. I think that was, that was a really helpful concept that I didn't know until I spoke with this guy on Saturday. Um, and I sent you one of the links because there's, there's several companies that apparently are, have written up what this hazard mitigation analysis is about. Um, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Who is the person you spoke to in Norwich?
Uh, his name is, it's Joe and it's C O G L I A N O. Um, they've, they've been in court for three years with their, um. They're, they've got a, a big solar development that's got batteries on it and they've been also connected to Carver, which has got a. Hundred fifty megawatt battery site. Um, so he's, he's just the regular person who's done a lot of research and talked to lots of experts and lawyers and stuff. So, um, and talking to people, he ended up being the go-to guy. Um, so he, he gave me the, some of these concepts and then I sort of followed up with my own research. Um.
Michael, do they, do they exist in bylaws now someplace or?
No, he's very anxious to get, if we approve this and get it approved by town meeting, he really wants it. Because they, he doesn't know of anyone that has an energy storage bylaw currently. Um, so we might be the first in this one too, Jeff. And so the additional stuff, I guess one of the things in number five that was helpful to think about is that. There's this, the stuff inside, so that, you know, the batteries, the modules, the racks, all that, we want to understand what's in it. And then there's the layout of, you know, so with the mitigation, it'll say you need this kind of venting and this kind of spacing and that kind of stuff. Um, and then in the exterior, um, what are the supports and the foundations in the spaces between containers? So there's different things going on. Um. And. For six, it's a, it's requiring an emergency response. Uh, I got it, you know, we. In the pre- previous version, there was a requirement for emergency response plan. This is just a little bit more specific, but it shares it with the relevant parties. Um, and then that there's a mid, a fire and explosion mitigation plan so that people know. Um, you know, what's in place in terms of detectors and sensors. Um, two. And I, yeah, I'll just, Jeff, you can scroll, but, um. One of the things that I learned, one of the issues is if there is a fire, there's two dangers. Or three dangers actually, that we would want to consider and what that I wrote in here. So there's a fire itself. And so if, if one battery or one cell starts heating up, it carries over to the next one and it just starts burning. Um, if, I didn't attach it, but if we Google it, like, I think there's, you know, like a Tesla catches on fire, it could take days to go out. So that's just one car. Um, but the other two things that are really interesting is that if it starts heating up, what they end up doing is venting the containers. But the chemicals that, that get created from this stuff burning are highly toxic. I forget what, which, it's like a really vicious chemical. Um, and so we wouldn't want that necessarily to vent it directly into the environment. So they have to have some kind of catchment system. And then the other part, which was interesting that I didn't know is. Because they would want to use lots of water to keep down the temperatures. You, number one, you would want to have water on site, which is a logistical challenge. But number two. The water's going to be contaminated once it gets put on the cells. And so that's going to go into the ground and, you know, seep into whatever's downhill. From the, the site. So the idea is to build in some kind of catchment for any water that's used in the firefighting. So those are, that's sort of the essence of the environmental dangers of these things. And so I wrote it with those in mind. But, um, some of the stuff we've looked at before in terms of notifying first responders. Jeff, what's your thing? Should be in section above. So it's just a movement?
I, I think that, yeah, the, uh, the number one item, I, I think, cause it involves a submittal, um, a submittal of, um.
Oh, yeah.
So it probably belongs up here.
Okay, that's easy. I can do, I can do that.
So, Michael, what you're, what you're talking about is it, it's really covered, isn't it? Between A one and then B. A one and, and B one actually, kind of covers what you're talking about, doesn't it?
Uh, hold on, I'm gonna, let's see, A one.
I mean, you're talking about the nuts and bolts of what happens when there is a fire.
Yeah.
What we're looking at is A one, which is the mitigation plan by a third party, hazard mitigation analysis.
Yeah.
And I, I assume that they come up with recommendations that the applicant has to follow.
Correct, yes.
And then B one really follows up, at least in my reading of it. That says, okay, now we need to make sure that the town of Chutesbury is prepared.
Yes.
Something happens.
Yes, that's, that's a good summary.
All right, thank you. Cause I'll, I'll, I mean, you went into a lot of detail and that's good. It, it, but it's really should be covered. I, I think by that, that lang- those two key, at least in my mind, key points.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I like having the detail, but I think you're, what you're saying is accurate, that if they can, if they hit those two things.
Yeah.
Um, I think you're right.
No, the detail, the detail is helpful just to have, for us to be informed, but from a, um. I guess a zoning point of view, those, I think those other points, one in. A one and whatever I said, the other one.
Yeah, and B one, yeah.
Yeah. Are the, are the critical ones from a regulatory point of view.
Great, yeah. So I think, you know, the, uh. I think I hit most of the big points. I mean, the big stuff was really the organizational, well, the two parts were prohibiting primary. That was a change from last meeting that Jeff and I sort of wanted to propose. And then the other one was really sort of nesting it within the accessory use. So it would be three, be in the three point three category. Um, Jeff, did you have any other? Stuff in your comments?
Well, okay, yeah. Um. Down here, there was a few, maybe some of them have been answered. Um. Let's see, onsite water, I said thought water doesn't work, but you.
Yeah.
Explain what water was for. It was for temperature lowering, lowering.
Correct.
And, 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 and there must be other things that are of a chemical nature that actually could put this out.
There's apparently only one other thing. I don't think anything really puts it out, but there's, there's some chemical combination that they apply. Um, but I asked that question because I always thought water didn't work either and it's, it is exactly just for the lowering. Um, the general sense is they, they just burn themselves out over the course of time, but it could take a long time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael, could you talk a little bit about what you learned beyond what you, it said here about noise? Cause that's a tricky one.
So I, noise is tricky. Um, I think the, the issue is because this is all about. Um, you know, in the batteries, it's, you know, a lot of this is about batteries, um, and the dynamics with them. But you need to keep them for safety perspective in a really, um, narrow temperature zone. So they can't get too cold. Cause then they don't work and they don't get, and they can't get hot because then they have the threat of a fire. So there's always heating and cooling, um, going on. And so you've got. Fans all the time, um, that are activated. So that's, that's primarily the noise. That I don't think there's any other noise other than that.
Right, but, but how, the tricky part, at least one of the tricky parts for me is you can measure or you can establish a, a decibel level. Not to exceed. However, you can't control reflections based on landscape. And amplification of sound noise, I should say, based on landscape. So, in other words, think of an amphitheater, for example, right?
Right, yeah.
You have a little bit of sound at the base of an amphitheater and guess what? You can hear it far away.
Right.
How, how does this apply? In other words, how do we control for that?
Um, I, you know, it's a, it's a great point. I mean, I was thinking of mostly from the. A butters, you know, or, you know, potential butters that you, you don't want to have it. Within reason crossing their line. And so I, I, you know, I looked at. The wind bylaw references noise regulations from Massachusetts. But when I looked at it, it's, and then I ref, I looked at the regs, they didn't really seem, it's just a number, you know, and then the numbers fluctuate. Cause I looked at different things and they came up with different numbers, like some thirty, some sixty, some ninety.
You're, you're talking about decibels now.
Yeah, yeah. And I didn't, you know, I'm sure people who know could debate it and we know less than that. So. It seemed like I was coming at it from the idea that if we say it shouldn't be a nuisance to a butters. Then when it comes down to the special permit, we can. Figure out specifics and maybe we'll know the landscape, that might be the issue. Um, you know.
I might not be in a butter, but where I'm located, I just happen to hear it even worse than in a butter, which is quite possible.
Right. So I mean, we could change it. It seems like the, the nuisance part is sort of like a, a, a way to sort of catch the concept, but maybe we can take out the butters.
Maybe, maybe. I, I mean, I don't, I don't pretend to know the answer. I know that, I know what the, a potential problem.
Yeah.
So.
So Jeff, do you want to go to, um?
Yeah, sure. Um, up here in two, direct vending to the environment of noxious. Now, just. Just bear in mind here that. That these things are, um, are part and parcel, according to Donna, of. A solar project, could be a wind project too, but, um. With the solar, you know, uh, we have limitations in our regulations on these things that are caused by state law, which. Maybe get changed one of these days, but not right now. The direct vending into the environment of noxious, noxious gases from containers is prohibited. Now what's, what's that all about? Is that when they're on fire? Is that when they're just sitting there normally?
No, that's when they, they're either on fire or the risk of fire. So they vent, they vent out the gases to reduce the temperature. So the idea, the way I thought about it, which is not an exact analogy, but, you know, on, on coal-fired, um, power plants, they have scrubbers. You know, there's some way of sort of mitigating the direct release. Um, so.
Well, would this be day in, day out, when they're just sitting there normally? Do they have to?
I think it.
Would, would, would this be something that? Comes into play when there's a, an emergency and, and, um, they're not operating normally?
I think you'd be installed and be there for when they're not operating normally. So it's sort of like, you know, this, this is a bad analogy, but. If you had a, a chimney comes out of the container. That there was some filter capacity built in. So unless, if you invented, there'd be no issue, but it'd be built in from the get-go, because. They're gonna, when they do it, they just do it.
Okay, so when, when they're just sitting there normally, um, I would assume they're. I would assume there, there, there's some venting, they're not, they're.
No, there is, I, I don't, there, there isn't. There might be venting of heat, but not of, you know, it's only the, the noxious gases only created when there's burning happening.
Okay, so, so these things don't require. I, I, I know the battery storage I have in my basement is vented.
Yeah, um, that might be for, like, just hot air, which is.
Is that passively vintage, Jeff?
Yeah, it is. So, you know, that's, in, in this normal situation, there's a vent and it, um. So. So, so Michael, you're saying in the normal circumstance, there's not a vent for these?
No, I think there's a vent, there's not, I mean, there's venting of hot air. It's when it's on fire that they, and.
Okay, so, so normally, when you walk into the containment room or whatever it is here, you're not going into a room full of noxious gas.
Correct.
Wasn't correctly.
Correct.
You, 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 you might clarify here that you're talking about, um. You know, from, from fire or explosive, if nothing.
Okay. I can do that.
All right, um. So let's see, contaminated water runoff from firefighting show before onsite contaminant utilizing impervious structure to protect soil infiltration. Okay, so probably if these things get going, uh, there's going to be a lot of water jumped on them.
Right.
So. What, what's envisioned here is, is elaborate catchment.
Some kind of catchment that would keep it, yeah, contain, if not all. Some kind of reduction of water that's, you know, if they're putting a million gallons hypothetically, a million gallons don't go. A percentage of that, whatever, whatever that would be.
So, so the water that's going on to the batteries and, and, let's see, is it going? So the water is, is going to become contaminated with battery chemicals from going on, going on to them and then. And then that water will, will go and infiltrate into the ground unless it's contained.
Correct.
Okay.
But, but, but is that, would that be addressed with Jeff's talking about? Would that be addressed in the specific hazard mitigation analysis? By third party?
Um, it could be. Um, I think this was just getting at it specifically, one, you know. I, I, for me, it's sort of, um, a both and. That if they say in the hazard mitigation analysis, it reaffirms that it's needed, but if it's not there, then this sort of catches it.
Okay.
That's how I was approaching it.
Okay, all right, so. This one here, I know where this came from.
Which one are you pointing to, Jeff?
The number four, E S S is prohibited on identifiers suspected aquifer wetlands and waterways.
Actually, it didn't, it didn't come from the Carver-Monague thing. He said it, like, so the one in Norton. Apparently, they're in the wetlands, they're on an aquifer, and not, they're on this thing called, um, areas of economic significance or something. Of which there's only thirty in the state and.
Critical environmental concern.
Yeah, and so the solar thing with the battery that they're fighting is on something that's all three of those. So he was saying. Of all the places in Norton, to put it, this is the worst place to put it. And you can't, you can't have it on aquifers and that stuff. So that's, he was emphatic about it.
Okay, so, all right, let me comment on this.
Yeah.
The, the wetlands, yeah, none of this stuff, at least with the solar, can be within a hundred feet of a wetland. So it, it already is not going to be, um, on a wetland.
Right, but with winded, could, could it be on, with wind?
Could it be with wind on a wetland? Not on a wetland. Um, it might be in the buffer zone perhaps. But not on a wetland, the. And it's not going to be on waterways, um, and waterways that are shown.
I was trying to get away, this is where I was trying to get away from the Carver thing of the sub, subterranean flows. That just seemed like a quagmire. I wanted to avoid. So.
The, 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 the suspected aquifer is, is the one that. I mean.
Sure you say identified aquifers?
Man. You know, there's aquifers everywhere. Here, there and everywhere, um.
I mean, the dilemma that I saw was it's, it's related to the one right above it, number three. So if you have all this contaminated water and it's got the potential to go into the ground. You, it's going to be bad for whoever is nearby. So that's what I, I was trying to address. If you have better wording, I'm totally up for it.
Yeah, um, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to, um. It, it's very difficult to establish, um. Where drinking water wells are being recharged from. I mean, that's a, a ton of, of research.
Yeah.
This one, all right, so. I'm, I'm more okay with some of this stuff as long as we all agree that with solar, since this is an accessory use. The waiver provision of our solar bylaw is in effect also for this. Is that everyone's understanding?
Sure.
Okay. Cause. I'm more okay with stricter language here if, under certain circumstances and with certain proposals that they make. We can, we can waive.
You want to put that in here for this one? Just, you know, wave is necessary?
Everything about the solar bylaw applies to this, including the waivers, I believe. We, we, we might want to say it. Um, I, I would think long and hard about this one though, um. Cause, um, you know, it, it's not, it's not going to be in wetlands, it's not going to be. On waterways. It very well could be over some aquifer, but boy, pegging, pegging where they are or, or. Definitely get rid of suspected.
Okay, I'm editing on my end, just so you know.
Okay. I, I would really watch this one. Let me see if there's anything else I have here, um. All right, let, let me know when you're ready for the next.
I'm ready.
Before you move on, um, I'm going to ask Michael to take out a butters out of, um, the noise one.
Okay.
Because that leaves it open. I think it's, it's stronger if, if it's not just limited to a butters.
Done.
Thank you.
Chutesbury does have some noise bylaw, although Becky just said it stinks, but. The last comment here was, um, this business here, um, I think both bylaws, solar and SWEST. Have these sections in them.
I didn't see them.
Um, I, 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 they do.
No, no, for the, for the, for the wind one, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's, I, I just read it before. Let's see, where, where is it? Um. It, it's eight point five dash five abandonment and removal.
Okay. So we, I just, I'm fine with taking it out if it's there. I, I just didn't see it.
Yeah, no, it's, um, you know, it's, it's almost a half a page.
Okay, it's, it's gone.
Okay. I, I, I think I'm done, um.
Anyone else have any thoughts or questions or comments or anything?
Uh, Robert, two questions. Uh, one, is there any requirement with regard to water? That there be a water storage, uh, facility set up so that there's adequate water in the event of fire?
Yeah, that's what I put in, um, in here. Let's see, I gotta find it, the number again, but. That was one of the additions, um.
No need to find it, I'm just checking.
Yeah, it, it, for that reason, that i, if it takes a lot of water, you know, because the thing that. Right now, you know, Walter goes and finds ponds that, to put out fires, you know, to fill up with. So. This is going to require more than that.
And, and secondly, uh, is there, I, I suppose there's some requirement as, uh, as far as. Uh, how the batteries, uh, store, uh, are spaced. In, in the event of fire, that, uh, there's less likelihood of one leading to a fire in another?
Yeah, so that's, there's two parts. Again, the baseline would be this hazard mitigation analysis. So if they come in it with the design and then we hear that, you know. They're spacing it one foot apart as opposed to three feet and best practice is a three feet and it reduces risk. Then that, that would give us the information where we'd say we needed three feet. Um, and then, but farther down under, it's, uh, under the safety environmental standards. The design specifications, it's not that we're telling them what to do, but they have to tell us. How they are spaced, both the containers and then the units. So within the containers, the batteries sit on racks. So it's like how many on a rack and how many racks are there and how are the layout, what's the layout in the container? And then there's a space between each of the containers, because there's multiple containers. Um, that have these things. So we would require the information. And then we could decide if that's adequate or not based on what the hazard mitigation analysis tells us.
Thank you.
Hey folks, I just got a call from the chairman who's got kicking, who's been kicked out of the meeting and would like to be readmitted by the host.
Sorry, I was typing. I didn't even see that he got kicked out.
I think he's. Ethan, what did, what did you do? You got kicked out of class. Any other questions or comments?
Um, Michael?
Yeah.
Up here, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look for a way to, um, to make it very clear that, um. That all the, the permitting requirements. For a wind or for a solar attached to an E S S. In applicability. Let's see.
It, it should be under C. It says this E S S should be incorporated into the special permit for the primary use, or if the E S S is proposed subsequent. A separate shall be required and comply with all requirements of the section pertaining to the primary use. I think that was your wording.
Yep, okay. Okay, all right, okay, I, I, I guess I'm satisfied, yep.
Okay, you're, you're smarter than you remembered.
Uh, sometimes I, I lose sight of my brilliance. Thank you for reminding me, but.
Sure.
I, I, I do have one thing about the use table though.
Yeah.
The, the, I think the way it should read is that this new category. Um, with the acronym E S S should be added into that use table. But then, under it should go N, 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 right? So no, 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 no. Um, because it, because all the uses in the use table are pri, are primary uses. So there's no primary E S S, so N, 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 all the way across the board. And then, like we've done with all these other little sections, we put a note saying C section. Three point three dash seven. So this directs you then to the accessory use section to find out more.
Makes sense to me.
So it's just the same way we've, we've done these uses in that table.
So if people are, are good with it, I think, you know, the next logical step would be to share it with Donna and get her feedback and then. Bring it back for reporting and any tweaking based on her comments. Does that make sense? So I don't think we need to have a vote, we just have to sort of say yes, send it to Donna for review.
I'm good with that.
I'm here.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you guys. Hey Jeff, can you send me this version so I can double check, I caught everything?
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I got Steve's comments already, so I, I think I've got ninety-five percent, but I just want to make sure before I send it to her. Cool. And, uh, like I said, I think we will be the first, the ones in the state. Ethan, thanks for making room on the agenda for this.
Okay, I, I'd like to point out that I was kicked out because of battery failure. Well, let's go on to the minutes. I, I put on the list, um, all the ones that Grace is not showing as, as done. Uh, let's talk about, I, let's talk about two, seven and two sixteen.
So I finished those, or at least the rough draft, and I sent those out and, uh, Michael's been helping me edit them.
Right, right.
So, um. Just a couple of comments. First of all. I don't, ah, I, I, I can't get to minutes that are sent. Like on the same day of the meeting. I, I tried to make it through the first one. And I have, um, I have a couple of little, little edits already, but I haven't even finished those. Also, if. If we're going to have some, um, some member input into. It, into the minutes prior to the, the board seeing them, I, I think we probably ought to see some version that shows what the members input was.
Uh, I'm just going to see if, I don't know if he sent them in the same, like, reply chain.
No, because I, it's, it's sort of better to just send it to you since you're not staff. I mean, since you're staff and you, you're not. A member, because then we started deliberating. So, I mean. when I in that in the email for this one, I sort of left it to Deacon to figure out how we wanted to do it because it was, it's a quick turnaround. So I mean, my sense is that if we all have comments, we could send it to you. You could sort of figure out what the appropriate edits are and then resend it out for next meeting. That's what I was thinking, but.
I I I'd like to see a version that that that's done by our our land use clerk based on on what she observes and hears. And then if if there if if anyone wants to have a whack at it beforehand, I I I'd like to see that in the track changes version rather than just incorporate it into a final version. So that that just makes it impossible for me to see the original and compare it to the edit.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm getting the I'm getting the new, the same one you're getting. I'm just commenting back. You know what I mean?
So I'm sorry, which ones, Jeff, have you looked at that you said that you haven't completed? Was that for the seventh or the sixteenth?
I looked, I I started looking at the seven.
Okay, um, the sixteenth I sent out Saturday night, I believe. So the my, so the one that you received for the seventh, those were my very rough draft, like that is exactly what I've observed and wrote without anyone else's input. Um, and then and then where was it? Okay, it wasn't Saturday, it was Sunday night. I did the rough drafts for the sixteenth and sent those out as well. And that's the same thing where it's just my input and observations without anyone else's input.
So so the two versions that that I have are are what?
Um, I'm not sure without looking at them to see which ones they are the so I mean, I can re I have both of them, so I can resend both of them out as just my my very rough draft without anyone else's input, if that's helpful.
Yeah, and I I I would rather just look at that and 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 have a, since we're especially in this mode where it's so easy to edit right as we're going with a shared document that that you're sharing and editing. I would much rather do a little bit of editing that we're all part of and and privy to.
Okay, that's totally fine. It's just with every board, it's different, like with uh Conservation Commission, it's been mostly me and Miriam going back and forth and her just telling me tips and tricks on how to edit them down, et cetera, et cetera. And then the only time I've ever had to do it for ZBA was with Chuck and he kind of ran it through with me. So it's just it's just different for every board, so I or from my experience so far.
Yeah, and Jeff, so my thinking with this was when I, when I, the sixteenth I did just before the meeting and and sent it off to Carrie, the seventh one I I did this weekend, but my thought was not that it should preempt. You know, like if she shouldn't make edits and resend it out as if, you know, my input was changing it. But there's, I just had a lot of changes, which I think would take up too much time in the meeting. So I just sent it to her and said, here's my input, and we left it to her to do figuring like she and Deacon would talk and figure out how to come out with something. But it wasn't, the intent was not to preempt a board discussion or a board review of her version.
Yeah, well, what it says, um, what what Carrie said, which was stated.
I think I know what email you're talking about where I directly said that he had helped me with them. Um, most of the edits, most of the edits that he did, I did like, I understood like what he was doing. So and like I said, like for the most part for the other boards, I've only been working with one other person. So that's just what made sense. But what you're saying also makes complete sense, and I do agree that it should be a complete board discussion and not just a one-on-one. So it's just, like I said, it's different from my other experiences with doing minutes. As of right now.
Deacon, do you have a a like a way you would like it done? Because I can I mean, Carrie cannot pay attention to anything. We could do it all as a group. I'm I'm good with either. Do you have a preference as the chair?
Just I I I just wonder about, I just wonder about taking a long time during meetings to to do the edits. I mean, that's that's the only concern I have. So what what about if if there aren't substantive changes, meaning, you know, commas, misspellings, that kind of stuff? I don't really care about that. If there are any substantive changes, then I think it makes sense to for us to review it. But to go over, for all of us to go over every little change, I think is is not a great use of our time.
Yeah, and I would say just on the on the ones that I do with, that I sent to Carrie, I would characterize them as there's no, there wasn't any real substantive changes. There were some clarifications, it's probably the closest to substantive, you know, so as opposed to saying it, it would like explain what the it was. There was one or two. You know, there was one or two things that I were inaccurate, but it was either because it's a term that got, you know, Carrie didn't know it was on the recording, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but it wasn't like Steve said blue and then we changed it to red kind of thing.
So where does that leave us, Jeff?
I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable with that as a as a long-term way of doing things. It's just not the way minutes should be done of you know, having edits made by members, whether it's one or more members along the way that are, that other members are not privy to. It's it's not good practice. So if all the edits are identified and we we get a document that that looks like track changes, we know what what the edits are and who made them. Um, you know, perhaps Carrie, if she wants to display a document that shows those kinds of changes, so we can see what they are and where they can come from. You know, then we could, we could run down those things at the meeting and they accept all edits or accept all changes or whatever. But I I I want to know what's been done to the original minutes.
How about this, Jeff, as an idea? So if we all get the original and we read it, right, so we're all getting the 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 first you know, thing unvarnished. And then if anyone has edits or suggestions, we send it to Carrie. Carrie gets to look at them all, makes changes and track changes. And the next month, we see where the changes are in track changes and she can discuss what those were and what they came from. It's a little bit more work and I think it'll over the course of time it'll lessen. But at least this way she'll get all our input and then it could be disclosed what changes she accepted or not.
Yeah, I like, yeah, that's what I'd like to see. So so we each get a raw copy. And then we can't discuss them among ourselves, but if we have particular things, we'll ship them to Carrie in in track changes format. She'll put them together um, so that we can see all the changes that there are. And then we'll just quickly run down through those changes and accept them or talk about them or reject them or whatever.
Yeah, well, I I would say yes. The only thing I would say that's slightly different from my recommendation was that since she's the author, she can look at them all and decide, you know, like maybe she doesn't like our suggestions, you know, so leave it up to her so that she presents what she changed. Um, as opposed to taking all of our changes. You know what I mean? Because I offer mine, I I I say take her to leave it.
And what happens, what happens when she gets conflicting changes?
Well, that's what I, that's what I figure. If she get, in that instance, it's sort of her call or she can, she can come forward and say three of you said different things and then we could discuss it. But rather than requiring her to capture all of our three changes, if it's you know, if it's something that's really clear, she can just make a determination and it's this, so the changes that she decides upon were reflected and if there's something that we have to respond to because it's a question, we can, she can point that out.
And and so all of us will have our own copies of our track change document to compare with Carrie's final document. And if she didn't make a change that one of us wanted, um, we can bring it up.
Exactly.
Well, one thing I'd like to point out is that I'm ignorant as to how to do track changes. I mean, I I I'm speaking for myself. I don't know about, I don't know about everybody, everybody else on the board, but that's a, that's a technological jump for me.
We can help you with that, Deacon. Are you using Word? Deacon? When you open your documents, you're using Word?
Actually, with my new computer, I don't have word processing. So so why don't we use it? Why don't we use a Google document then? And that easy to track changes on a Google Doc? Yeah, even for you, Jeff, it could be.
I don't do Google Docs. I I do Word Docs, thank you very much.
We, it it it's time, it's time.
I I use stone tablets sometimes.
Though, the Google Docs is very, very, very similar to Word Doc, if not almost the same thing.
Exactly, and
it works just as good. And I think it is a good idea, especially if I'm going to have several other inputs into it. At least I can attract who is saying what and where. Because like as Google, Google would, I'm assuming would most likely do is color code everyone and each color would have a name so I could see who was saying what, where.
The only thing I would say, Carrie, I like that idea. Like, you know, it's it's the bizarreness of open meeting governmental work because I would ask Grace, because I think one could argue that doing something in Google Docs is online, it's it's deliberation because we're all seeing each other's changes.
Okay.
So it's, it is a really good tool.
Is it deliberation if it's talking about minutes of a meeting that's happened?
Yeah, well, I'll just tell you, so I don't remember what it was, but whenever they changed open meeting law like ten years ago, the first big change, they, the guy who was in charge of the department did a whole statewide tour. And so I went to a training like in Turner's Falls. And this woman said, in our, in our committee, we all send in, you know, the our edits to the chair and then the chair does, makes changes and that's how it works. And says, oh, no, you can't do that because that's deliberation. So I think it's in the eyes of who the regulator is. It's it's, I mean, it seemed really impractical. Um, I get, all I'm saying is run it by Grace. I I think Google Docs as a collaborative tool is great.
Michael, it's it it becomes deliberation if there's a back and forth.
Well, if you make edits and I see it. But if if Steve, if you make your edits first and then I go in and make my edits on top of yours, then I'm seeing what your edits were. And I can, I can change my opinion or I cannot delete it. I can add it, I can add a word to your thing. And then we're sort of building on each other.
So you think that's
It could be.
Not editing and just commenting instead.
I think it's the same.
Still be deliberation.
So, you know, one deliberation is a communication among a quorum of a public body, right? So I can send an email to the public body and say, look, here's what I think about this project that's happening down here, A, B, C, and D. That's a deliberation. Doesn't matter if anything, anybody replies to it or not. Okay, so the question is whether or not, um, I mean, because I know you can talk about the agenda. I don't know about minutes. Minutes might be exempted from deliberation because I mean, it's a public meeting that already happened, you're talking about. And it's not, you're not I mean, you know, in theory, you're not talking about something that's out of the public view, right? So I mean, it might, it might, it might not really fall in there, but it could, it definitely could.
Yeah, yeah, I would just check with Grace. I mean, we can also post the link somewhere. I've always, I've, we used to do that on school committee, actually.
I mean, I I don't know, like, how how hard is it to just kind of keep doing what we're doing and and, you know, I mean, if, you know, you got the original copy of the minutes, you know, look at it and you know, when it comes out, uh, you know, we go over any changes that are made and and that's that, you know, I mean, we don't need to make a big deal about this.
I will say, though, I do understand the concern just because I don't have any background in doing minutes. And these are like quite legitimately, like my first few sets of minutes. So I know they're going to be very rough around the edges and not exactly like up to speed with what usually is posted. So I understand like there is probably going to be like generally a lot of edits. I mean, even like now doing like my latest set of minutes compared to like the sets of minutes, there's a lot of stuff that I already want to change and go back to and edit because I already see like the difference in like what I've already learned. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, yeah, you you'll.
So it just does make it difficult just because of my, like, my level isn't up to par as to where it should be for this set level.
And I I just want to take a moment to say, Carrie, thank you very much. I mean, it is a steep learning curve and your efforts are totally appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll I'll second that. I still owe one month of minutes I gotta do.
Yeah.
It's it's a hard thing. Well, I I wonder if I wonder if we should I mean, given that that this may take a long time, I wonder if we should, if we should schedule a meeting session where 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 we, where we just collectively edit minutes. I mean, if we if we did that in a couple of weeks, I mean, if we, if we spent half an hour or forty-five minutes just having a meeting doing, doing edits, I mean, maybe that's time well spent.
I think it would. I think I would get a lot out of it. And I think everyone would be pretty set on what's established in the minutes.
Yeah, because because I don't think in a regular meeting, we we want to be spending you know, copious amounts of time on the minutes.
That's a good idea.
If we do that, I could then write it in the, um, what was it called? The edit tracking thing? Because then I could do, there's my original and then the edit tracking from whoever attends that meeting. And then those can be sent out and who's, whoever could not attend those could then write like then email me and be like, I like these changes, but I didn't like these changes, right?
Yeah, hopefully if we have a meeting, we just approve them and it's done.
Yeah, yes.
By all means. So so, I mean, should we schedule a meeting for a couple of weeks from today and and just do minutes? Hey, sure, I mean, sure, why not?
Yeah, sounds like fun.
Thing and we should deal with it as well as we can, you know? Yeah, yeah, no, it is, it is, you know, I mean, one way or the other, we just got to slog through it and get it done. Well, I'll I'll do that if I'll schedule a meeting for a couple of weeks.
Great.
And these are the only two sets of minutes that I've done, correct?
Yeah, and we want to.
Or was there? No, okay, no, these are the only ones. I think I've only done minutes so far where you and the ZBA have both collabed.
I think it's the only two and
They're the best ones.
They're lengthy, they're impactful, I will say.
If we don't have Chuck at the meeting, it'll be shorter.
That's right, and he won't be there.
Which is super ironic because I have one set of minutes from my first ZBA meeting and that was the shortest thing I've ever done. It was an hour and it was very straightforward. And I was like, wow, this is which and then I, and then this, and I'm like, okay, this is so different. Like, this is not what that was.
You know, Ki- Carrie, I'll just give you one thing that we've kind of touched on before, and that's that, you know, the minutes don't need to be a transcript.
I learned that the hard way.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, you know, it it can be very difficult, especially with like our ZBA meetings that we've been having, right, to like you want to kind of convey some sense of what the discussion is, but you know, we just talked for two hours and what what are the minutes for that? What was said? So but I mean, you know, so it's sometimes it it is helpful to kind of go through what are people saying back and forth a little bit because that is the discussion. But sometimes you can cut a bunch of it out and be like, all right, we talked about this, the minutes were approved, you know, whatever. The minutes are not, you know, it's
Right, the, in, you know, the only good guidance I would Right, in, you know, the only good guidance I would say, Carrie, is, you know, you have to capture decisions. Everyone agrees on that. And then really, the other guidance is they should capture the sense of what was discussed, so that if someone wasn't there, they knew what went on. Which doesn't mean that you capture everyone's point necessarily. I think that level of detail is not required. Just, you know, if there's different perspectives, you can summarize it. But it, if you approach it that way, it should be much easier, because they can be shorter, and you can sort of like just take it in, and then, you know, write one sentence for ten minutes, like Nathan was saying of talking.
Yeah, it's kind of an art form, too.
Really is.
Yeah, it really is. I, I don't understand how Linda has been doing this for so long. I don't, I really don't. This would drive me up a wall if I had to do it for that long.
Yeah, and no one can, I mean, her, there's so much detail in Linda's minutes. I think that's definitely not the bar to shoot for.
Well, I would know, I would note that it, to get to that point, it also took her fifteen years, so.
The best, the best test, Carrie, would be summarize discussion that Chuck and Jeff have in twenty-five words or less.
With all the cases that were cited.
I think there was a point, I think, in one of the other minutes that they had been arguing for, like, I think like ten minutes, and I think I just wrote Lacy and Damari disagreed, and I was like, that's good. That captures what that was.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so. Well, I think we've done what we need to do on minutes. We're prepared to do some more. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have something quickly I want to interject. New business, old business, I don't know what it is. It doesn't look like I'm gonna be at a town meeting this year. I have a daughter graduating the day before, and a daughter graduating the day after, and family and travel, and so that gives me a great excuse not to be there. So in terms of planning board presentations and stuff, we're just playing around me.
Okay, okay, you'll be missed. I actually thought of one other thing I quickly want to mention. I was, last meeting, I got tasked with signing up for the Mass Planners account that Jeff told us about. And they don't have a group option, and I emailed them to say, you know, we're the shoots for a planning board, can we do this? And I never heard back, so it's, I think it's only thirty-five bucks. I can sign up as me and just share the account information for anyone who wants to log in. But I didn't want to do that without checking. So, you can think about it since we're at the end of the meeting, but I think that's the only option.
No, well, what you were trying to do is, is join the board up as a member of the Mass Chapter of the American Planning Association.
Yeah, yeah, and so I went to them.
Right.
And you can only sign up as a person.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily get you on their list, or that gets you access to the guidebook, which is what, what we were talking about.
Right, yeah.
Written by the Bob's.
Yes, yeah, that was, so that's what I was trying to do. So if you signed up as a member, or whatever it is to the chapter, you can, you can join the chapter, and you don't have to join the national thing, so it's much cheaper. But the form that you sent me, it's basically, it's oriented to an individual. And so I emailed them, and I said, is there a way of doing this where we're legitimately, the planning board is joining, so we can get access to it? And I never heard back from them, but I didn't want to sort of, you know, it's easy enough for me to sign up, and the board pays the money, and then we just share the password. I mean, that's often what happens, but I didn't want to do that without checking everyone first. So, we can ponder it for next time, but that's my report back.
Okay, okay. You want to make a motion to adjourn?
I have one more small question. So just to be clear, I am sending out these rough minutes to everyone, so everyone has a chance to look over them. Okay.
Okay, and we can, we can try to, we can try to, sure, I think that's good, and then we can try to deal with all three in a couple of weeks.
All right, all, for right now, I'm just gonna send these two. I'm gonna have to go back and watch the recording of this and pick up some more stuff.
Sure.
So, Deacon, one other suggestion. If it really looks like we're gonna be getting some heavy-duty permitting coming up, if we look, if it's, I would ask that, that we try to really clear our decks here of stuff and get streamlined, and the way we do minutes, maybe pare down the bylaws that we're working on, and, and sort of develop some headroom here for these special permits, cuz this is gonna consume us, and I think we need to get ready for them.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be anything until the SJC decision happens, Jeff. So I wouldn't expect it before, you know, June or July, at the earliest. Because right now, our bylaws are, are, you know, they've got it, they, they would have applied earlier. They thought it was a a way they wanted to proceed. If the SJC decides something else, it might be different. That's my, that's my hunch.
I think even, even if the SJC decides in the middle of our proceeding, it could send those special permits on a different different course. I don't know. You, you think they're actually waiting to, as to what they apply for? For those things to come through?
Yeah, cuz I mean, the big, you know, the big thing about a biomap two, for example, is, you know, those, all the projects are located in some biomap, but if they, if all, and that's not, that's not direct health or public welfare. So if the SJC says you can't regulate around that kind of stuff, then it's an open question, you know? Yes, you want to go to sleep, you want to go to bed, you want to stop talking. Second.
Okay.
Okay. More discussion?
Labber again.
Okay, I'll, I'll call the roll. Michael?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Aye, aye, aye.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
You, did I get everybody?
Are you and I, Deacon?
I am. Did I get all of us? I could have missed somebody.
You did, yeah, I think you did.
Good, good.
We're done.
Thank you. Couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks.
Good night.